So if everybody's good, I'd like to call the order to order the board of selectmen meeting for Tuesday, November 12th. Please all rise in step of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That's great. Thank you.
Everybody enjoying the windy windy day in Madison today? It is howling today.
Get those leaves down.
I'm pretty sure I have the last leaves in Madison. I think I do.
Um, it's funny. I didn't even notice. It shows you my mind is on other things.
It's moving today. They're saying thirty five mile an hour gusts per Sam. Yeah.
And for some reason, I don't know why Art is up on the screen as a co-host. Which is kind of odd.
That's just how he he has permissions on the board of selectmen meetings.
But you can feel free to.
Take you off.
As an attendee, I'm just here to support Adam Levitas.
For one of the agenda items, right?
Yeah, so feel free to make me an attendee.
Okay, I just because otherwise it's like we have this other name up there the whole time. But thank you, Art. All right. Well, with that, I guess moving on for selectwoman's update, I just want to. Thank our staff, registrar voters, our town clerk. And all the election workers for, I think, a pretty well-run, highly efficient and successful. You know, process. Obviously, early voting was a new undertaking for all the towns in Connecticut this year and. Presidential years are not the easiest time to try to initiate a new process. But I think they did a fantastic job with. You know, just how everything was rolled out, the communications and, you know. Just making sure that our elections were safe and secure. So we're grateful that that all went smoothly. I had the opportunity to attend our annual veterans ceremony at eleven o'clock on the green yesterday and some many of our board members were there. Just a really good opportunity to thank our veterans. I want to continue to offer thanks to all those who have served. Our country and our town, you know, and it was a really nice event. And that's it for my update right now. Any liaison reports or selectman comments? No?
Yeah, just one logistics thing I told Peggy already, but I need to sneak out of here at about nine for a personal doctor's appointment. I will be remote as I'm driving there, but I won't be on camera, so.
Okay, with that, then I guess we can move on to citizens' comments. Do we have any hands raised? I don't see anything. There will be an opportunity. I think mostly right now we just have staff on. So obviously, at the end of the meeting, there's an opportunity for citizens' comments at the end. All right, item number six, I'm going to make an amendment as I emailed the board about I'd like. To for the consent agenda, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. As amended to include item J, approve the appointment of Roz Camma and Ryan Duquesne to the Madison two fifty America. Madison two hundred, America two fifty steering committee.
The move.
All right. Any questions on that? No? Okay, great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, perfect. So that passes. All right, we'll move on to item number seven and and this is. The topic of an update on the Neck River Elementary School and it has to.
Just quick, Peggy, just a special thanks to all the folks that applied. To the Madison two hundred and I'm assuming we had other interviews as well for other committees. It's pretty amazing that we get so many qualified, wonderful people and super thanks to having them step up.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think one of the things that came out of that, there's so many groups that want to be involved in this and so. Maybe what we do at our next meeting is kind of list liaisons for a lot of these organizations. So even though. They can have the liaison anyways, the committee can, but if we want to formalize that. Just so we make sure that we're capturing all the different touchpoints in the community for this celebration. So.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Yeah.
And the meetings will be publicly announced and open to the public and so anybody who. Who wants to come and provide input will have the opportunity to do that.
Okay, so moving on. Adam, I think, is here from the Colliers. And Graham is the chair of the new school building committee. We've got Art who's involved and. Here and now we're what's what's nice about this is we're getting down to past construction and getting into all the finishes and. Things that need to be completed for the school. So and Adam wanted to give us an update and kind of that whole process. So go ahead, Adam.
Morning, everyone, and thanks for having me. Just wanted to, like Peggy said, provide a. Brief update of the project, but with a specific focus on the some of the packages that'll be forthcoming, not only to the school building committee and the board of education. But also eventually to board a selection for contract approvals. I've got some slides, a very, very brief slideshow that I'll show you here in a moment, but basically just want to walk through sort of. Where we're at in the project as a whole, where we're at in those pro those separate packages and their development, how they're being developed. And then just briefly touch on budget and then kind of forecasting the procurement methodology for some of these because obviously that'll be at the key focus for. Board of selection. So with that, I'll share my screen here. And hopefully you can see that it should just be a picture of a schedule. So this is the overall macro schedule of the project and as you can see here in twenty twenty four, we have. Our red line here current status, just a little bit past the halfway point on construction. Don't have a at the slideshow of construction, but just kind of this little bit of an older photo, but kind of give you the sense of what's going on if you were to drive past it on the site. Lot of the envelope skin is going on the building, bricks being installed, some of the. Vapor barriers and things like that are going and so being installed on the walls. The roof is already on, so working on wrapping up the. The tightness of the building and then moving on the inside to do the rest of the electrical, eventually getting to finishes. All those last items in the spring. However, like I said, the mention of the focus of this discussion is on this purple items here. And in parallel with the construction effort through our construction manager, Go Bane, we also have a. Call an owner-led effort for all of the FFNE, so for fixtures, furniture and equipment. So the proverbial notion is is Go Bane's building a building, everything that's loose inside desks and. IT cables, things like that that are. Not integral to the building itself are purchased on the owner's side and installed thereafter. So Go Bane's great at building buildings. Not so great necessarily at buying chairs and things. So it's a separate effort and that's why we have those. Packages. So right now, we're we're there's been some design that's already occurred, but we're getting into the meat of. Wrapping up the packages for a series of approvals, procurement, some early installation of the IT network closets. Things of that nature and then ultimately doing installation and moving in the summer months after the building is. Ready to be occupied, but obviously before school starts, there's that the target is that there's a summer period to get a couple of months, get in the building. People set up their desks, work out some of the kinks and the, you know, my password doesn't work, log into the wifi. You don't want that happening on day one. You want that to occur during the summer. So that's this effort that we're talking about here today. Just as a overview of the the building, how there's multiple sections in terms of stylistic appearance, but really this just showing this to kind of convey the overall. Notion that the the building is two floors and within each of these rooms with each each of these sections, the. Project design team led by Tech Town Architects is working with owner stakeholders. Obviously, the superintendent in his office, but the principal teacher liaisons when it's appropriate. So for example, sped teacher weighing in on the sped sections. Speaking to each individual component you see here. So this is the current state of affairs for the. One of the floor plans, but as you can see, there's each chair, each desk, each carpet. Gets that's looked at, worked through for each individual room to identify and compile overall package. So as I mentioned, gets down to the room, types, colors, you know. Getting this is just a sample rendering from one of the grade five rooms, but. As you can see here, this is just a working session note from one of the later sessions after we've gone through some iterations where teacher notes are put in. We want cantilevers, not this type of leg. Does it have casters? Does it have all that stuff gets worked through? Led by the architect and worked through with the the entities or stakeholders. On the AVIT side of things, a little less graphically interesting because it ends up being lots of counts, you know, how many wireless access points, how many switches, how many patch cables, that kind of thing. I'm working through with Art and his team to develop the scope of work as well. And then the third package that's being developed is the playground package. If you recall, and then zooming out and showing the site plan, there are three playground areas on the site. For pre-K to the west and then the two for the upper grades on the east. And with each of those playgrounds, same kind of thing, going through identifying appropriate equipment selections. This is a plan view, so it's a little hard to to see. But ultimately manifesting is what the playground equipment would look like. The designer ensuring that it has the appropriate safety fall heights and and materiality depth beneath them and then on a more. User standpoint, working with again, school administration on the the types of equipment that are being selected, not just whether or not the students want slides or or swings, but. But also thinking of inclusivity, that has been a key focus for a number of the pieces of equipment to ensure that it's, you know. Not just checking the box on meeting, you know, the types of of equipment that's. Fit the the population needs at the school, but also actually fitting the needs. So for example, one of the. One of the areas of this piece of equipment was changed out. It's kind of hard to see in the back here, but it was changed out to be more at ground level to allow for better access, not just, you know, having students be able to go and use. Able-bodied being able to use the the spinning area there. And a similar note, one of the pieces of equipment that was added was just a shaded area with planned tables beneath in case there are students that don't want to go play on the equipment. They want to sit, they want to talk with their friends. Providing an area there that's thinking of temperature and sun and and working through all of the the needs that principal and staff. Are seeing on day-to-day basis at the current schools, trying to incorporate that at the playground design. So that's the how the that's how the packages are being compiled and developed. Ultimately getting into the timeline of things. We're finishing up the actual composition of the packages, developing the drawings, the specifications. There are a number of documents that the the state grant process requires. But working through the finalization of those packages to get the first series of approvals. Which would be through the school building committee and the board of education and those approvals are with the intent of the type scope that's being procured. So does it align with the education specifications? Does it align with the needs of the district? And the approval is for the project to go to the state and have the state do their final review. In so those board approvals, SBC and Board of Education would be end of November, but probably more likely to December timeframe for those approvals. We then get the state meeting in December, January, basically as soon as we can schedule it. After after the approvals mentioned above by the SBC, the BOE. Once the state reviews, the state is effectively granting approval to proceed to either contracting or bid, basically procurement. So the state has said, yes, this meets all the requirements for the grant process and you can go go ahead and procure these items and. They'll they'll be eligible for review for reimbursement. That's the key item of going to the state in the December, January timeframe and then ultimately bidding and contracting in the new year. You know, once we get our letters from the state for each of the packages. Immediately getting the the contracting lined up to get that resolved or going to bid as as required for items, we need to go to bid. And that's where both the school building committee lines votes as they usually do, but also by understanding from when we did our. Construction contract is that the board of selectmen wanted to review these packages prior to contract because they will be larger in nature. We're looking at in the ballpark of about three million dollars combined. So this is not just a small contract here or there for components to be installed. So that's it for the the slides. I did want to just, and let me stop there. Any questions on any of that before I talk about just high-level budget and procurement items?
Nope, looks awesome. Looks really good.
I was gonna say it looks really good. I need to get to that point.
I don't know.
We have our, just as an actor, we have our weekly construction trailer meetings and there's way more smiles at this job than some other jobs may have. People generally get excited about it. It looks great. Stakeholders find, you know, like, oh, wow, this building's amazing and we're kind of marching along. Things are on schedule, so. Knock knock on wood, nothing crazy happens, but right now it's this is how.
Totally just jinx yourself, man. Why'd you say that?
Glutton for punishments, guy.
Yeah, right?
So just to kind of wrap up this, we're not seeking any votes or approvals here, but. Again, this this is intended to be the updates. That way, when we do come back to this board in January, February for actual approvals. Or if there's something that needs to be ironed out in advance, we've had the preamble already. Overall budget right now, it's coming in slightly above what was initially budgeted, but if you recall, that budget was established back in. Late twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, something to that effect. So all of the escalation that affected the main construction. Also affects FFNE and and playgrounds and things of that nature. But we're trending at about ten percent over, so not anywhere near the twenty twenty five percent that the main construction project. Contract had to deal with. So about two point seven was the overall combined budget for those packages and we're trending at two point nine three, somewhere around there. Initial scoping was much higher based off of just initial, you know, what do we think we want, what do we think we need? But the administration, the design team have done a great job of taking that back. Quite a bit from where the initial estimates were. So it's been it's been a good process process to identify what's required. You know, not trying to cheapen the building or anything like that, but really drill down to, you know, what manufacturers are wanted, what's a what's a need versus a nice to have versus a want and. Making sure that those are included. So that's where the that's trending and all of that is is contemplated already in project contingencies. So that's not a concern from a. Uh that's where the that's trending and all of that is is contemplated already in uh project contingencies, so that's not a concern from a uh at least a current. Financial management perspective.
My question, so you answered it.
Um in terms of procurement methodology, um with furniture packages, there's often a um. A a greater focus on providing the exact type of material you want. So it's this type of chair versus that type of chair. We have a district standard on, you know, this IT component. Um the playgrounds are designed a certain way uh for a certain manufacturer who is one type of slide versus a different type of slide. So with construction, you know. Drywall is drywall is drywall. What brand of drywall doesn't necessarily matter, but obviously it matters more when you get into these packages. So the uh current intent for the majority of the procurement items. Is to go and solicit off state DAS contracts. Um so that way you can get the exact piece you want. It's got the set price. There's no ambiguity. Uh that's a typical process for this type of um. Grant fund project. Some larger pack sort of sub packages, if you will, will require bid. Um so for example, the smart boards, just with the amount and the individual unit price, those are going to exceed the state contract limit. So those will need to be put out to bid and will need to get a uh sole source approval from the state to be able to go out to bid for those items, but it's a. Um again, it's a district standard, uses uses promethium boards, therefore. That number of promethium boards would be sought uh out of a sole source bid, public bid process. Some smaller components, you know, less than five thousand dollars. The typical example is the little flags that go on the whiteboards, American flags. You don't go out to bid for, you know, thirty, forty flags, something like that for classrooms. So those types of items typically are um just a direct purchase through. Town uh pro cards or what have you, and then move back to the project budget for incorporation. Um there are, there is the potential for um some additional uh. Labor installation and configuration, particularly on the IT side of things, you know, Art is here as well to to. Kind of speak to that, but basically there's uh town standards for IT configuration that uh they often use the. One vendor to help configure that consistently across the district. So that's a component that uh might be targeted for a you know, bid waiver or something to that effect. Sure consistency across the district. Um so working through with the project team on finalizing those scopes. Developing the packages, identifying what's targeted for bid versus state contract versus direct purchase versus uh uh. Soliciting the town vendor, but the idea is that over the next month, those who get compartmentalized. Um I'll work with uh town finance and Peggy to confirm if there's any. Intermediate approvals that need to be done through this body in advance of some of those January and February contracts. But then ultimately, again, at the January, February timeframe, coming back to this body for those effectively a a series of approvals for contracting for. Uh two to three billion dollars worth of furniture, like ground packages, things of that nature. So that's um that's the end of my spiel and update. Um so happy to answer any questions or um. That's again, this is just sort of be the preamble, so we're not coming in cold, asking for votes and approvals, I would have a sort of uh update.
Great stuff. And if anything goes wrong, we'll just blame Graham, right?
He's trying to find the unmute button on his phone.
I mean, I think uh it would be good, you know, w- we're gonna have want to update, obviously, because we we've been talking about the transfer funds, you know. From uh the Pulson project uh to the and we know now that we're that will be coming back. And so I think it'll be important to have maybe in December or something, uh where we are in that whole process. Obviously, you're still working through finalizing things. Um so there'll be a more detailed conversation overall on the project budget, which we're in great shape. You know, when he talks about ten percent, remember there's all these contingencies and everything, so we're not really ten percent. Because we have contingencies to handle a lot of this, so um so there's no budget issue here. I just want to highlight that. Um if anything, we're expecting to get uh funding back into the Pulson project, so that hasn't changed at all. Um and so I think that will be a conversation that we'll be having uh towards the end of this year to kind of update the board on all that.
Yes.
Okay. Great. All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good morning.
Okay. All right, um moving on to item number eight. Um you have in your packet uh an update on ARPA, we're getting towards the final. Uh amounts here in terms of trying to um, you know, allocate, I guess, uh funds. Just a reminder to the public that we have to kind of have uh. Purchase orders or some sort of earmark for our fund, our ARPA funds by uh the end of twenty twenty four. And then they have to be spent by the end of twenty twenty six, so it was important to have everything um allocated. Uh here, we're at a balance and I don't know if Stacy's on and she wants to give. The update, I've got it here in my packet. We all saw it. I'm just trying to find it now, of course. I just had it and now it disappeared.
I am here.
Okay, great. Um yeah, if you just want to spend a second talking about where we are in the balance.
Sure.
Long meeting, I'm like.
Before we um vote today on the projects and the next agenda item, we are at a hundred and seventeen thousand. Um that's after we returned the balances and at the last couple board meetings for the projects that were approved. So before we move on, we have a hundred and seventeen thousand right now.
Okay, um.
Doing pretty good.
Yeah, we're doing good. Um and there still might be some money trickling in. Um as these projects close out and I'll talk a little bit after we get through our decisions here, but um. Um how we might take those extra money trickling in through an action taken today and by the board of finance. That it would just kind of automatically go to a certain project at the end. Uh but we still have these outstanding requests. Um so for good to move on to item number nine. Um and. Or maybe we'll do the motion, let's do the discussion of the requests and then I can do a motion depending on what we decide. Does that make sense? Um for um, so we have some outstanding requests uh that we've been kind of, they were second request by organizations that had already received funding. Um I did at the last minute add one more town request, um and this is through conversations with Austin. We've been having some ish, I don't want to say issues, but a lot of discussion about the benches downtown. Um and one of them was more, some of them are in disrepair and some of them have been moved around a lot, causing some problems. Uh for residents and as we started looking at the benches, it's really a hodgepodge down downtown that have been in existence for a while. Um I think they were supposed to be replaced during the downtown center project, so you kind of had everything looking the same. And the funding from what I was told, you know, they ended up not being able to fund that because the project obviously was very tight on the budget. So Austin did an inventory, um and we thought, wouldn't it be nice to have everything look the same? And kind of reset the button on the benches downtown and have kind of a thoughtful plan where we mark out where we're going to have them. And I think we would look to actually secure the benches because they've been kind of moved around and causing problems getting in the way of people. Um so Austin, if you just want to spend a second, he wrote a memo about it. Um and we came up with, there's two choices if the board is interested, so I thought let 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 us all weigh in. Um if we want to move forward with this and um Austin, if you want to spend a second talking about your inventory.
Thanks, Peggy. So yeah, last week did an inventory of the benches downtown. And as you could see in the memo, um there's twenty one benches um throughout the downtown area. Also, that includes the four at the Memorial Town Hall Blackpool. Um. So as you see, the the biggest area with the most benches is the um. Ashley's Ice Cream Plaza, which has nine. Uh out in front of M and T Bank, there's two, there's one out in front of Coldwell Banker Realty. Um the Little Park on the side of Walker Loden has two. Uh two benches, there's two benches in front of uh Lightbul Life Balls area for Memorial Town Hall, and then there was one. That was in some pretty serious disrepair out in front of the post office that we removed. Um a few weeks ago. So on the memo, you'll see there's um some choices on the back. Um. These are from Dumars. This is the company we use to purchase benches for all of our parks in town. Uh and the first one on the list, the Dumars thirty five uh is the ones that we have down here at Surf Club. Um so there, you know, they have a a rounded arm area. Uh they're Douglas fir, which is um pretty uh. It it works well in the the. Salt air and um the salt water getting on it, which isn't as much of a uh. A factor downtown, but but still, um they hold up to the elements pretty well. Um and then the. The third one, the Dumars fifty seven, um. Again, more of a standard park bench style. Uh little more expensive. Um and then the one in the middle is the Dumars four ninety. Um you know, about fifteen thousand dollars more than the third, the Dumars thirty fives. Um but just wanted to give you some options, some some choices to look at. And all of uh these, this, the pricing that I have on there includes. A plaque, uh so a lot of the benches downtown have plaques, um all the ones at Memorial Town Hall. Have memorial plaques, um a few in the Ashley's Plaza do as well. Um. So we'll be able to, you know, plot out the current benches, what it says on the plaques, replacing kind. And then the ones that don't have plaques, that would be an opportunity for somebody to um to purchase that from us.
And then we'll have kind of a a running inventory, you know, of of this and kind of track it a little bit more. Um and now Austin has a policy that people agree to, right? After ten years, is it? Um if you're.
Correct, yeah. So when we do sell or when we do have memorial benches that any of our parks that people. Uh purchase, um so take the purchase and then the the donor funds the bench um. And then going forward, um since I started, you know, four years ago, any ones that were were donated during that time. Um when they do become in disrepair or, you know, are are no longer a viable bench. Um that donor needs to replace it um with the same same type of bench, we would just go through the process again with that person.
The uh thirty five is the is the only one that doesn't have regular feet, is anchoring that style of bench a problem?
Nope. So we we have those, uh if you go down to uh East Wharf, we have those on the. The deck, the the walkways down in East Wharf, um it's just a a different type of foot, but it absolutely can be anchored into the ground.
I'm giving my opinion, but but I I like the Dumars fifty seven. It seems like I'm I'm thinking of the the clock and the sort of the historic nature of the downtown space and the. The the one at the top, the Dumars thirty five seems a little more modern as opposed to maybe a little more classy looking. Um I I'd vote for the fifty seven.
I agree with Scott. I like the more classic look for our downtown area with the style of buildings. It's my personal opinion.
That was that was my my thinking as well, that downtown is a little more traditional, so we would want something more traditional. Um so um. You know, if we were to do this, obviously I would prefer to do uh the fifty seven as well.
I don't pay with that. That we're proposing to replace, are they serviceable? Can they be relocated? Um to like the ball fields or some other place that.
Salt Meadow, maybe, yeah.
They're they're serviceable, um they'll they'll need a little bit of a uh some TLC, but yes, they are usable benches, yeah.
That's good, yeah. I was thinking the same thing, Bruce. It would be great to, you know. If we were, I know you said, Austin, that the style of benches that we're looking at. Um boards and whatnot could be replaced as needed, so if we've got the structural frame from the other benches that. You know, we could service and repurpose in other areas, that would be great.
Well, I I'm with you guys. I think the fifty seven is probably the one right one to go. Um and so. In the interest of time.
Okay.
Since we're in agreement.
When I when I amend the motion, then we'll do the uh uh up to thirty eight thousand seven hundred. I think when we did this on Friday, we didn't have the exact. Numbers or I hadn't noticed that there was a a little higher than thirty five, so we'll approve thirty eight seven hundred. So, okay, so we're good on that. And then we have these um uh outstanding. Uh four or three outstanding second requests that we had seen before, and then Bruce had requested. Uh additional second request for ABC House because ABC House we had approved. I think it was two months ago, but that was kind of their first request because of just timing and everything that had been involved with their project. So now um they're kind of in the mix as a second request. Uh my thought was approaching this similar to that we've done with others uh uh second requests and we would grant, you know, and we did this with the um. Little League um is a thirty percent. Treating all groups the same, they've come back, they've been through the process. Um and that we would award them thirty percent again of their second request. And then what would happen is then we would take, so they each get thirty percent of what they're requesting. And then the remaining funds would go into this motion and um be allocated moving forward. To a CIP project and we're proposing the um uh. The E O C project, because we know there's budget can issues on that project and that this is somewhere we can sweep in and pay for some of the upfront. Um advisor costs with the architects and um. Hey, Austin, you need to mute? There we go. Oh. Let's go on. Okay, great. I'm sorry. So um and that and so this would kind of be a sweep that we would do. Um into that project and then if anything else trickled in over the next six to twelve months. Because we've done this approval, any extra dollars would go to help that project. So it's a big project in uh in CIP. We got a big federal grant for it, but there's still a matching component that the town has to do for that project. And um and this would just help, I think, help, you know, that project continue along with its funding. Um so so I guess for discussion right now would be, you know, I think we're all comfortable with the groups that are making these because we gave them first requests, right? Um and maybe just. With the spirit of knowing we want to kind of, the the idea had been focusing on town projects moving forward. You know, we give a third of the request to the uh community request and then the remaining funds. And I did quick math. It 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 basically would add up to um, there'd still be seventy five thousand dollars remaining if we gave each group uh. Uh a third. And we did the benches, although I'm, I did it on thirty five thousand dollars, but it would give you roughly seventy five thousand dollars left over that would go to the E O C. That they could apply right now because they're in, they're hiring uh construction, you know, we just hired. Uh a firm for the design construction and we can apply that money to that bill. Um. So those are my thoughts. Any other ideas on this?
Right consistency, so I think that's. Good if we did that same approach to Little League, I think that's. I think that sounds right to me, um just so that we're staying consistent across everybody.
Yeah, Mike.
Yeah, I think the um. You know, generally, I'm I'm good with it. I I still, uh I'm a I'm a little disappointed that the Wellington project. Is is not necessarily going to directly benefit the residents. Um that this is just simply making the project uh more financially feasible, um which isn't a bad thing. Um but with uh an ongoing um solar panel thing, it would be nice to think that the residents would see a break in their electric. From that. Um but as I understand from the explanation we got before, that's not the case.
For operations, it's more for.
Well, that allows them to put the solar in, but there is no then downstream benefit to the residents.
I I I don't know if that was necessarily what I I my understanding is, you know, this, anything that's going to reduce the overall operating cost of the um. Uh of the project is going to eventually help the residents, right? Um so and it helps from. Future, because we know solar helps protect you from future uh increases in um. Uh rates. Uh you're right, do do we know how that's all going to work now? You're right, do do we know how that's all going to work? No, we don't, we're basically funding this. You know, asset for them to help make sure that their electricity is affordable.
Hesitancy with with the lyric stage request is. Uh this is, this is not a uh looking backwards at a COVID related. Type of thing, it's it's they're looking forwards to their twenty twenty five budget. And asking for a contribution against their twenty twenty five budget, and. I've just struggled to reconcile that within the spirit of. Of where the where the upper money came from.
Because it's not a direct project that's having a shortfall now, I ki- I kind of, I kind of agree with you, Bruce.
Yeah, I agree with that also.
I mean, I I I I don't disagree with that either, we've been really uh more focused on um.
Short balls, right, yeah.
Well, but also, I think, well, I think any of these organizations had big shortfalls during COVID, right? Because fundraising was difficult, so that kind of. Carries forward, um because now any of your new fundraising is kind of partly filling in gaps from before, but um. Well, and we don't have to fund the second request, I mean, we did give, um I'm trying to think they had on the chart, just so we remind ourselves. You know, that they received, so the lyric stage received actually quite a a good reward size, thirty two thousand four hundred and forty dollars. And then the Wellington received roughly the same amount uh for the panels. Um but it is a project and it's the same project they're coming back for, and we did tell these groups that, you know, they could come back if they want, you know, we'd give them a third. I think originally and then come back. Um, oh, no, wait, we gave them. So the. Wellington, we only gave a third. Yeah, Wellington, solar panels, they asked for thirty two thousand four hundred, we gave them now nine thousand seven hundred and twenty, this is in your packet. Um and then we said, come back if there's money left over, maybe we can give you more to help that project. Madison Lyric Stage did receive a full, their full, I don't know if that was their full request, their full request might have been much, but they received thirty two thousand dollars.
So what if we don't fund Lyric Stage and then but fund Wellington in full? Because in essence, we cut them in the first round.
I mean, that's up to the board, um how much more we want to uh fund the project. And then um. ABC had asked for a hundred and six, we gave them eighty two, so this would basically be fully funding them as well if we did the full. Uh twenty three thousand dollar request.
Well, we can still do, I think, you know, partial funding, I mean, I as much as. It would be good, I think when we, you know, at least in my mind, when I distinguish between um. Uh a look back type of making hole and and some of the ones that that aren't necessarily there, there, there's kind of a larger community benefit. Um component to it. But like um offsetting expenses on the EOC, which, you know, is going to benefit uh directly the taxpayers. I think the the Wellington project um is is one of our cornerstone. Um strategic goals, right? Um. Being a friendly, welcoming town to those types of projects, so, you know, at least in my my. Rationalization, um it's easier to get there. Um with that, um and then sort of the same with ABC, I think it they they touch on a. On a, in a very tangible way, a cornerstone to strategic objective of of um. Um uh making the town welcoming for everybody.
So if we did just, so we have seven, if we do the full uh thirty eight thousand for the benches, that leaves us seventy eight thousand three thirty two. And then if we did Wellington at twenty two four hundred. And the ABC House at twenty three. That leaves us thirty two thousand nine hundred and thirty two dollars left, is that right? Okay, so we, that still leaves us thirty two thousand nine thirty two. Vibe, the show choir trailer, that was definitely a second request as well. And we kind of left that hanging out there. So I don't know what thoughts are on that.
Well, do we want to, I mean, they've been pretty consistent in coming, and do we, do we want to do that four thousand? Um for them, I think.
I'm comfortable with that.
I'm too.
Okay, so four for that. So basically then, um and then I guess the idea is Madison Lyric Stage did get a large. Donation, and the question is, do we want to give them anything else?
I have a thought about lyric, um and I realize I'm getting ahead of myself here, but um. The Academy building, when it is finished, is a possible uh venue for the lyric stage. I I I'm not speaking for them, but. I I guess I hate to invest in their physical plant if if a couple of years from now, they're going to uh perhaps be moving across the street. A part of the uh funds they asked for was for some HVAC equipment. To uh heat and cool the tent, which is very meritorious, but I guess um I don't know whether. I don't know what the future holds, but it's entirely possible they'll be moving across the street.
Guys, just a quick interruption, Jen's inter- internet went down, so she's trying to get back on.
Oh, okay.
Just a heads up, maybe due to the wind.
Yeah, I mean, that's a fair thought as well, Al, we, you know, that's that's a big conversation that will be happening over the next couple of years, depending on where we land. On terms of what we can do with Academy with the budget. So. I mean, it is, it is, you know, they were one of our larger award recipients, I will say that from a donation standpoint um already.
I say we hold off on that one.
All right.
Okay.
We we've got a consensus here.
So that would leave us twenty eight thousand nine thirty two, that would go into the EOC project, a CIP project. So we'll give.
When we we.
And just I just a quick check, and that's something that's that 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 we can do per the. Per the constraints, right? That that constitutes that's being spent. It's allocated and and okay, so that that, so that's, I'm just checking in on that.
Yeah, so basically, i- and she checked this with auditors, uh Stacy, I don't know if you want to. It can you give me, I just need to make sure I get the numbers right, so that the total would be. I would be would be approving if we did uh thirty eight seven hundred, right? Plus uh four thousand. Right? Plus twenty two four hundred. Plus. Twenty three thousand for Madison Lyric Stage, that would be eighty thousand. Eighty thousand one hundred dollars.
That's what I have.
Yeah, okay, and then um and then. Then we can talk about item number ten, and you can explain that in a few minutes, so why don't we get this done if Jen? Can get on here in another second.
Saying that cell coverage is tough where she lives, and she's having a hard time getting that to work also, so.
Do something about that.
Yeah, she's trying, for sure.
Well, why don't we talk next?
So I'll move number nine as amended. If uh. If that's what you're.
All right, so uh discuss and take action to approve round twenty two, ARPA as amended, ARPA uh. Funding request totaling eighty eight thousand one hundred dollars pending Board of Finance approval. For uh up to thirty eight thousand seven hundred for the Beach and Rec Department for new outdoor benches for downtown center, four thousand dollars from Vibe. Show Choir for purchase of a trailer, their second request, a twenty two thousand four hundred from Wellington for solar panels, their second request. And uh twenty three thousand dollars from ABC House for renovation project, a second request.
So I'll move that if.
Yeah.
Somebody wants to second it.
I'll second it.
Okay, great, so uh and I I think Jen was alignment with this, it sounded like, uh so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. Um so I'd number ten is discuss and take action to approve allocating all remaining ARPA fund balances. Uh as of December first, twenty twenty four, and any future balances that may become available to the Madison House Building Edition Project Pending Board of Finance Approval.
I moved.
Um so uh Stacy, just want to talk a little bit about this, because this is kind of a blanket thing, so any money that trickles in would just get swept into this CIP. Project, the EOC project.
Yeah, exactly, so we were worried that we were gonna come to December thirty first and something was not committed. Or something fell below what we originally committed and we would run out of time. So I reached out to the auditors and they confirmed, excuse me, that we can allocate. Any balances or any unspent or any unobligated funds. To an existing project that we either already spent the money or towards a encumbrance or a commitment that's out there. So we thought, since we've already spent over where we are right now on the EOC, it would be very easy to just. Allocate the remaining balance um to that. Project, and also if anything comes up later on, like we don't know about today, by making this motion today, we're capturing. Any loose dollars that come, um because we absolutely want to take advantage of the full five million dollars that we got. So by doing this motion, we can allocate any balances to that project. Um as I said, we've already spent enough, and even if a big surprise came up with um. Or bigger than we're expecting, that balance can also be allocated to this project. And we don't foresee big changes, we just wanted to protect ourselves and cover. That, you know, make sure that we meet the twelve thirty one deadline.
Yeah, and we've had a couple of things that we had approved up to a certain amount that they're getting finalized, so there could be like five thousand dollars left over. Something like that, all the stuff trickles in, and the good thing about the EOC is we already approved that initial contract, right? For the um design build team, they're starting on all that, and that's like a hundred and forty thousand, is it?
I think it was, I think it was one twenty, but yes, we had already um committed to that, and we've already spent. Um, you know, money out of that as well, so we will definitely, you know, be covered for any little balance that trickles back in.
Okay.
Sir, Bruce or Jeannie, can you promote Jen?
Did, I did.
Thanks.
Okay.
Or I tried to.
Yeah, she's not there.
She's still there uh.
Oh, Jennifer's iPhone, is that?
Yeah, that is her, and I've lected on promoting her three times now, it hasn't seemed to work, so. Uh, let's see. I just gave her talking.
All right, Jen, can you hear us?
She's got no.
Audio yet.
Well, we'll press on, I know Scott's got one foot out the door already.
Yeah, I know, okay, so um. So if everybody's good with that, um that is is basically taking the remaining fund balances and and sweeping it to the. Uh project and CIP that's already been approved, the uh Jen, this this motion on item ten. Is basically taking the leftover balances and putting it towards the um emergency operations. Uh center uh downtown firehouse expansion project. Um and so, you know, that'll help out on CIP for sure.
Perfect.
Uh so with that, then all in favor of approving um item number ten, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, great, all right, motion passes, thank you. Um and Jen, we kind of, just to, I don't know if you heard where we came out, we awarded um full requests for Vibe. Wellington and ABC House, and we um did not uh move forward with the Madison Lyric Stage right now, just because it was more of like a. A contra- but uh donation and and um. And it was kind of in, they'd already received thirty two thousand dollars from the town, so.
Okay, yep, I'm in agreement with that.
Yeah, okay, good, so um so we'll move on to item number uh eleven. Uh discuss and take action to approve a return of eighty thousand four hundred and fifty two dollars in the CIP CNRE residual project balances. To the CIP CNRE master account pending Board of Finance approval.
Moved.
The move? Second.
Okay, great, any questions about that? That's just funds that were left over from existing projects that uh from another project that we're returning. Any questions on that? No, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I have number twelve, discuss and take action to approve a funding request from the Beach and Rec Department in the amount of fifty thousand dollars from the CIP. CNRE master account for the CIP CNRE Town Campus Maintenance Garage Restoration Project pending Board of Finance approval.
Moved.
So moved?
Okay, um so Austin, you want to talk about this, this has been in CIP for a long time. Um but why don't you just spend a second, obviously, the costs have gone up significantly more than what CIP had been kind of escalating it at.
Yeah, so at Town Campus, we have the maintenance garage that our Buildings and Grounds Department uses for. Storage of plows, uh grass seed, ice melt, um. All kinds of things that are required through the department. Uh it's been in disrepair for as long as I can remember. Um and it's been in CIP for, you know, as Peggy said, for quite some time. Um so we are um at the stage now where we want to, or we we need to. Do some work on the building, so this project includes. Uh new lighting and electrical, new overhead door. And re-skinning um the building, so keeping all of the existing. You know, metal uh parts of the building, but but re-skinning the outside. And also replacing the heating system on the inside. You know, it's it's a buil- building that we use every day. You know, five to seven days a week, three hundred sixty five days a year, and. You know, it needs to be um. We have a lot of a lot of equipment, a lot of very expensive field maintenance stuff that gets kept in there um. So having a building that's, you know, watertight. Um with the proper heating and ventilation systems in there, um is pretty important to. The day to day operations here uh with the department.
So I think um if you've ever looked at the building, it's pretty obvious it needs to be uh. Refresh, um and and like I said, this is one of those things that always just gets pushed to the side in CIP. So we're we're glad we can kind of get to this point, and there, and before, I think we were trying to do the whole replacement, but steel is just so expensive now, any steel building. So this was a kind of nice way to do a more cost effective way to uh uh up update the building.
Yeah, and the the steel bones of the building are still still good, so thankfully, we're able to to. Hold on to those and just skin it and uh have a nice refresh down there.
Any uh additional questions on that, concerns? Okay, uh all in favor of item twelve as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All right, great. Um moving on to item number thirteen. Um discuss and take action to award a contract to BNP Construction for two hundred and twenty nine thousand five hundred fifty eight dollars for the Town Campus Maintenance Garage Restoration. Project as recommended by the Beach and Rec Department. And authorize the first select one to sign all documents associated with this award, budgeted in fiscal year twenty twenty. Twenty four, twenty five capital improvement, CNRE pending Board of Finance approval of additional funding.
So moved?
Okay. Great, and this is just actually the awarding of the contract uh with the uh with the additional funding, um so this will all be pending Board of Fin- Finance, obviously. Any questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. Uh item number fourteen, um discuss and take action to approve a funding request from the Madison Police Department in the amount of eighteen thousand six hundred and fifty eight dollars and sixty cents. From the Communication Fund for the purchase of a voice recorder system for nine one one services pending Board of Finance approval.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, great, I'll let uh this, this is something that kind of was recently discovered, um or, you know, uh I think it. It's, you know, I'll let Jeremy talk to it, but um that. Needs to get upgraded.
Good morning, everyone, yeah, it's um a system that records all of our nine one one transmissions, nine one one calls. All the radio transmissions for all the service providers, that's on top of police, ambulance and fire. Um we just found out that our. Um we just found out that our system has been failing and um. We need to keep this system going, obviously, for records protection laws and everything. So it's just a system that needs to be replaced and it's uh. Definitely used by all the services and the.
So this would be coming out of the Communications Fund. Any further questions? No? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, great. Uh motion passes. Um. Item number sixteen, uh discuss and take action to approve selected revisions to the town's personnel. Policy regarding personal days and vacation accrual schedule.
So moved?
Okay.
Okay, great. Um so this is basically following on um. Do we lose Bruce now?
Yeah, I don't know if I'm here or not.
Okay.
Peggy, did you award the contract for the police? Nine-one-one services?
Did I skip one? I skipped one. Sorry, let me uh retract item number sixteen and I will uh um. Item number fifteen, discuss and take action to award a contract to Eventide Communications for a voice recorder system for nine-one-one services. In an amount of eighteen thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars sixty cents and to authorize the first selectman to sign all documents associated with this award. Pending board of finance approval of additional funding.
So moved?
Okay. Um so this is just the contract piece of item number fourteen. I kind of glossed past that. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, great. Um. Item number sixteen, now I will remove uh uh make another motion to discuss and take action to approve selected revisions to the town's personnel policy. Regarding personal days and vacation accrual schedule. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Um so this is basically, we had our conversation last month about proposed changes. We'll we're gonna continue to do some work on the deferred compensation plan. And we'll talk more about that, but these were ones I think the board had discussed and felt comfortable. Um it would be adding an additional personal day for town employees and it would be uh changing the vacations accrual schedule. To be more in align with what other municipalities um are offering. Um you know, in terms of competitive, keeps us competitive for hiring purposes. And Deb is on here. I don't know if you have any questions. I think in here was a markup, right? The actual document. Why? My thing is all messed up right now. Oops. Any uh questions regarding? Sorry, I'm trying to find the uh the.
There's a red line version there.
Yeah, it's just towards the end. I've got like a million. I know we, you submitted it, but let me just see uh. Why am I not seeing? Was this not in the packet?
No, I saw it in the packet.
Page seventy-four.
Sorry. Yeah, okay, I was trying to refer you. Here it is. I got it now. Yeah, I I went too far. Yeah, so this is basically page thirty, which just updates the accrual schedule. And all we're doing is um. You know, that you can be eligible for three weeks vacation uh or four weeks vacation, starting in year ten, correct, Deb? And then uh whereas before it was year fifteen, so you had to be here another ten years to get one more week of vacation. It's way out of step with where, and it's not in practice, because a lot of times we're doing lateral hires. So we end up. Offering them more vacation anyways. This just makes it fair for our own employees to be, you know, uh. Uh compatible to any kind of lateral hires that we make.
Peggy, Scott Murphy would like to be promoted.
Nope. All right. Oh, Scott's iPhone, yeah. Got that. Okay. Okay. All right. Okay, Scott, you're you're promoted now. Um. So um so anyways, these were what we had agreed last time. I think that everybody was comfortable with this. Obviously, the co- uh deferred compensation plan is going to be a lot of process. And gonna have implications on the budget, so we we're gonna separate that conversation. Any further questions with those uh changes? No? Uh Bruce, are you on? Are you good?
I I I am. Um I'm on uh dial-up modem speed here.
Oh, boy. Okay. Um so I guess with that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, yep, okay, yeah, you all got the markup. So, okay, great. So item number sixteen. Um so item number seventeen, I thought we'd just talk about a little bit more. Um the deferred compensation plan, which is basically our kind of 401K, four fifty-seven plan. Um and we talked about increasing the matching component um to make us more in alignment with our. Our collective bargaining agreements. Unaffiliated employees right now receive a six percent match. Our collective bargaining agreements. For a long time have been getting a seven percent match. And then also, if you look into, I think Deb had shown the comps from comparable towns, a lot of towns are at a minimum seven and even higher. So um this does have a budget impact. So Deb was just gonna talk a little bit about those numbers. Um and what that would mean from a budget standpoint. When we had this conversation, there was a lot of discussion about um. Incentives, I think. And and so I just want to make sure I know where you guys are comfortable, what changes you're comfortable. Because once we kind of agree what we want to change, then we bring in, we have to uh have the um. Uh pension advisor and our attorneys go through and revise the plan document. And that's a process. That then goes to the Board of Finance and then a town meeting. Um so I just want to make sure I understand what types of changes. And you will have a chance to review those changes, obviously. But, you know, before we. Spend a lot of time drafting a document, I want to make sure we understand, you know, where we are. Uh so Deb, if you want to just talk about the um. Uh the matching and the budget impact for that and what the changes are that we're proposing, that would be great.
Okay. So we have, this is for unaffiliated employees only. We have twenty-five. Unaffiliated employees that participate in the defined contribution plan. Of those twenty-five, only twenty employees are at the six percent. Match, which is the maximum amount. The other five are contributing less. So if we look at that spreadsheet and we look at those numbers based on what is currently happening today. It would be eighteen thousand one hundred and one dollars. As an impact to the budget if we were to move from six percent to seven percent. And at, like I said, at this time, only twenty out of the twenty-five employees are affected. But that's how much the annual budget cost would be if we went from six to seven percent.
And I I will tell that I will recuse myself. I participate in this plan. So as I will recuse myself from voting, you know, for changes. So this will be a uh a board decision. I'll step out of the voting for this. So I just wanted to put the budget impact out there. And then there's some items in the document that are more. Uh we're gonna be cleaning up some of the language thing. It just issues that have popped up when employees have left, where it's not clear in the pension. We call it the pension plan, but it's the deferred compensation plan, right? Um uh uh. That, you know, so the markup would change, allow us to change the uh matching. Uh component to it, and then we would make these adjustments in terms of um. Well, the other thing is the vesting, excuse me. We talked, it's the matching, but it's the vesting, which is the other piece.
Right. The vesting is the second piece. We're looking to change that to a twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, a hundred percent. As opposed to the five-year cliff vesting. Um we have found that. Along the shoreline and the other towns that we recruit from, that most or all. Towns are using the twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, a hundred, as opposed to a five-year cliff. And when our employees are finding this out, they don't see that. As a um benefit to being here at the Town of Madison, so that we're just looking to be competitive. With other towns so that we can recruit when we need to um for the positions that are available. So that's another thing that we were looking at, because we're hoping that if we have an employee that's been here two to three years. And they know that they're already two to three years vested. That they would stay longer, as opposed to somebody that looks like, well, it's already been two or three years. I'm not gonna get anything out of it. And they leave because they don't have any investment within the Town of Madison. So we're hoping. That that will change and that we will have more of a long-term employee um when they come here.
I think it's just fairness. I mean, I think a lot of these were um, we were coming off a pension plan, you know, which is very different. Where people tend to have a lot more longevity. Um and, you know, now we need to adapt that we're, you know. We're not, it's just a different kind of uh retirement um uh benefit environment. Than when this plant, this is dates, it's been over ten years, right? It's it's been over ten years since it's been. Yeah, so it's a different change in mindset, for sure. I think before it was kind of mirroring the vesting for the pension plan. Now we're looking at it holistically as a defined uh uh contribution plan. Um so it's just time to update it and refresh it. So if if people are comfortable with that, there'll be another phase of this now where you'll get a markup and we'll talk about the actual, what it, you know, of the actual plan. Um and but we would, understanding if we're gonna move forward with the vesting. You know, there's gonna be this sixteen thousand dollar hit. Or what was the number again?
Eighteen thousand one hundred and one dollars.
Right, that we would have to allocate into the new budget. This would go into effect for July first. Um so so I will, if the board is good with it, I'll put it all there. That doesn't mean that we have to agree to it now, but you know, at least you know that's what's gonna be in the proposed budget. And then we can have further discussions, because it's trade-offs, right? We understand that there are trade-offs um in the budget all the time. Um and so we can kind of have that conversation later, but at least now you know kind of the origins and what it would look like if we did move forward with uh approving this later.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Any other questions for Deb? And like I said, this will be, the conversation will continue, so. All right, great. All right, well, thank you for that. Um. Moving on to item number eighteen. Um discuss and take action to approve releasing funds from the Planning Reserve in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to fund consulting services. For the IRA tax credit for the Town Campus Geothermal Project Pending Board of Finance Approval.
So moved?
Okay.
Second.
All right, great. So um I'll let Stacy explain this, but this is um. Unfortunately, in order to get our money on the IRA tax credit. It's it's very complicated and requires a lot of specialized reporting. And so we're we're gonna have to hire. Uh a consultant to help us get through this, but obviously the reward is huge. So Stacy, if you want to talk about this and how we landed where we are, that would be great.
Yeah, sure. So we've been talking about this, um reaching out to other consultants and seeing what the best option was. And then a couple of months ago, I went to a um conference. And I heard this firm CLA talk about their experience and the positive results that they got. So we had a call with them, the whole group, including facilities and the um. Vendor on the town campus facility only. This is not the school yet. This is totally separate. And we decided that they were the best fit. They came back with a price of twenty-five thousand for town campus. They're estimating eight hundred thousand dollars for reimbursement. They will do all of the filings. There's a tax return that needs to be done. They will do that. Um and they are, we already provided them. With a lot of the information about the project, and they do believe that we have an excellent chance of getting back this eight hundred thousand. So we're pretty excited to get this moving along.
And if you recall, the board, when we had to get this project moving, we had appropriated, this is replenishing money that the town had kind of fronted. For the uh for the um uh for these, this IRA tax credit funding. So this is just the next step. I think um it's unfortunate that we have to hire consultants for these things, but that's just the way it is right now. But they have been very successful at getting the money and they have some examples. And um so um. And then we we decided Planning Reserve was the best kind of pocket to use that from, and that requires both boards. Any further questions on eighteen? No? Okay, great. Um a- all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, great. All right, um item number nineteen. Okay, good.
Hard to get on beauty drive at the same time.
Yeah, no, be careful, Scott. I think uh you want to focus on your driving. Item number nineteen, discuss and take action to approve a contract with CLA LLP in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand. To provide IRA tax credit services for the Town Campus Geothermal Project and to authorize the first selectman to sign all documents associated with this award. Pending board of finance approval of funding.
So moved?
Okay, great. All right, great. So this is just basically the contract that would be awarded once the funding is approved. Uh all in favor, say aye? Aye?
Did you get a second? I'll second it if you want.
Yeah, no, we're good. No, Al's been doing uh um. So, um, all right, item number twenty. Um discuss and take action to approve the town uh joining the Byboard Purchasing Cooperative to benefit from Aventazer's procurement pricing.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, and this is.
That's a mouthful.
Yeah, I know. This is another one of those consortiums that um we did one last time that allowed us to participate from the Massachusetts one. Um I forget, was Sam, was this the one that you were proposing? I forget who this originated from, the Byboard.
Yes, um. Yeah, it's for the uh sign, the steward signs, they're on that consortium. So I think Chris has got all the paperwork filled out. All we have to do is send the application and and actually, we're gonna get a cheaper price once we do that.
Yeah, so if we're members, then we get that like a discounted price if we're members of this consortium. So it saves us money on the project. Any further questions on that? No? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, great. Um and I think that is. Thank you, Scott. Um.
You're welcome.
Uh, item number twenty-one is citizens' comments. Um, it looks like we have a hand raised.
Go ahead, TP. You have permission to talk.
Oh, hello. Hi, this is Terry Vanadolder, Seventeen Bartlett Drive. Um, I didn't know that I would have an opportunity to talk in person, so I did submit a question. And you did address part of this already, but I was curious why on the agenda, the Board of Selectmen. Chose to vote on the distribution of ARPA funds before discussing the approval of essential building and infrastructure town projects. Which must be funded by Madison taxpayers. Um there are a couple of items, as you already looked at, that do, that were in the suggested. ARPA fund recipients that don't meet the quote federal eligibility uses. Um per the twenty-two thousand twenty-two uh Department of Treasury definition. The Madison Lyric Stage season budget shortfall is one, which you already decided not to fund. But also the purchase of the trailer for the Vibe Show Choir doesn't meet the federal definition of eligibility for ARPA funds. Several items on the today's Board of Selectmen. Which do require funding, such as the Police Department Voice Recorder for nine-eleven services. The Town Campus Maintenance Garage Restoration Project, the Madison Hose Building Project. They do meet the eligibility for receiving ARPA ARPA funds, and they make sense. Even funding overtime pay that is already in the budget for Police Department and other town staff. Are legally eligible for receiving ARPA funds and make sense. So when looking at what you've already approved. Both today and historically, it's a good idea to take a look and review at. The specifics of the federal law regarding eligibility.
Okay, thank you for your comments. We're always conscious of what, there are certain contingencies. We received an award under ten million dollars. Was had a different set of rules that we follow, but thank you for your comments. Um, with that, any other um public comments? Nope? Okay, great. All right, I guess with that, um hearing no objection, uh, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.